All right, welcome everybody to the five P M joint work session for the city council also acting as the R D A and M B A. For June eleventh twenty twenty four, and we have all council members present, so that's exciting. Welcome back, Councilmember Chaburka from. Yeah. Um, okay, just a quick review of our meetings, um, our meeting schedule, six P M special municipal building authority meeting. Uh, following roll call and opening ceremony, we'll have a public hearing on the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget. And that will be the bulk of the meeting, um, the, the item or that was the meeting, that's the, that's the M B A meeting. And then we will adjourn and move into our redevelopment agency meeting. Uh, we've got some minutes. No minutes on M B A, but we have some minutes on the R D A, uh, board member hire, you've got those. All right, and then we'll have a public hearing on the redevelopment agencies proposed budget. For fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five, and that will encompass that meeting. And then we'll move into our special city council meeting. Uh, where we have some additional minutes, approval of minutes by council member Chaburka and council member Graff, had a chance to review those. Um, then we'll have our public hearing. Uh, where we will hear, uh, have the public hearing on the proposed utility revenue bond parameters for the thirty six inch canyon water line. And we have, uh, Lisa Stout and Fred Philpott and Nate Robertson here, they'll be here for that, are they, will Libby here live or will? Available online, okay. Following that, reports from planning commission, uh, we have two proposed rezones, uh, we had, uh, the six oh five North Jackson property. And the nine eighty one twelfth street to twelve and twelve forty five Monroe Boulevard, which we had in work session. Last week, I want to say.
Chair.
Yes.
Could I correct my, the record a little bit?
Yes.
My recollection on the six oh five North Jackson. Uh, is not the same recollection that the, that the board, the school board members have, so they have. Told me that the admin eventually said that they didn't have to have the road if they didn't want it, they just chose to not build there for another reason.
There were other reasons, okay.
Yeah, I, I was, I do have a recollection of the other. But I have been corrected and I thought I, I better collect, correct the record here as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Yes.
Thing, um, that's okay on, on that rezone, so it's not directly related to the rezone, but it is. Uh, related to the infill housing program guidelines, so there was a question a couple of weeks ago with the procession about whether that would come back. Uh, they. I might, or this was the one.
Um, I couldn't remember. Answer the question. Check, um, and their final concept of you come back.
You'll see that again because of. So if you do the rezone, they'll be able to work on the site plan, layout, things like that, but that final concept will.
Excellent, thank you. Any other discussion on those two items? Okay, uh, then we will have our report from administration on the Ogden Pioneer Stadium sponsorship naming agreement. Um, and also we'll have, um, should have Alan Hall. Rick Davis, and what is Rick's position with the, is he, uh? He's, okay. Awesome, so we can talk to Rick about, we want to honor our clown. Okay, or any other rodeo related questions? Um, okay, uh, public comments, and that will wrap up the meetings for tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, let me turn the page. Okay, next page, uh, after comments, we do, we do have consideration for journeying into a closed session, so. Um, that's something that we'll look at at that time and then go from there. All right. We'll start this meeting with, uh, Justin Sorensen, uh, up to. Present on the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget amendment year end adjustments. Welcome. Nice haircut.
Make sure, my wife does a good job, so. I'll make sure she knows, um, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to go through a couple of, of budget openings with you, um, the first one. Is, I believe we're talking about the city one first, right? So, that's okay. Um, so while Brandon's pulling that up, so each year, at the end of the year, we, we look at if there's any. A pro, final appropriations that we need to do for the year, um, and so this, there is quite a few items in this, uh, budget opening. Um, if you have any questions, please feel free to, to ask me as we go through them.
One question. Brandon, can we make the screen just a little bit larger, that end screen? Is everyone okay with that? Okay.
Great, thank you. Uh, so first we'll look at the general fund and some of the proposed, uh, adjustments to the budget in the general fund. I, I apologize, I do have some notes, so I, hopefully I remembered her as I go through this, and again, if you have questions while we're going through, please, please let me know. Uh, the first one, the first line in there is we want to appropriate, um, funds as part of the agreement with. Uh, the Parkway Group, um, that was done through an L T D A back in November, uh, part of that agreement was that they would purchase the old Piccadilly Building. Property from the city, the, the, the city is the one that owns that property, and so we, we would like to recognize that revenue, and then we would like to propose a transfer out of the general fund. To the Ogden River R D A, there's a separate action item in the R D A budget opening to recognize that revenue coming in. Um, so that is the first item in there is recognizing that two hundred and fifty thousand, also in non-departmental. There is some proposals, so each year we budget for, uh, wage, uh, contingency to be used for other, other purposes. And, um, so one of those is a reduction of a hundred and fifty thousand that we would be using in other departments, and so. I'll, I'll describe those in more detail, the last item under non-departmental relates to, um, we have some funding for our comprehensive sustainability plan. Um, that we've been building up each year for the time when we go through that process, we have a decent balance in there. And right now we, we're finishing a compensation study, and one of the things that we would like to look at next is a workforce planning study, and so. I know H R would like to, to start that sooner than later, and so we would like to propose, uh, shifting sixty thousand dollars, um, over for them to be able to start working on, on that workforce planning study.
So, so what kind of things are not going to happen from the sustainability plan funding, if it doesn't get done? Or if it's not funded, sorry.
So there is still funding in there, so there was currently, I had it down, we currently have a hundred and ninety thousand in that budget right now, and so we have enough in there to cover the contract for that study. Um, and then. And then, so we have, we feel like we have access to be able to use to start the workforce planning study.
And can you define workforce planning study for me?
I may have to invite Lisa up on how we, how we are, what the plan is on how we're going to do that study.
Rick, do you mind sharing your mic, I mean, council member higher? And so those online can hear you too.
What we'd like to do is an R F P, just, um, giving, uh. Probably several firms, because not every firm is going to be an expert on fire, police, um. Accounting, um, every area of the city, so we'd like to do an R F P and, and. And allow people to, to respond to pieces of it, so it will be looking at. The staffing needs, so you know, just if we're short in certain areas, if we're over in certain areas, looking at both of those. And then also looking at, uh, retention, um. Ideas and also training, so you know, with technology changes, just looking at a long-term strategic plan for retaining and training a workforce as well. So it will have a couple of different components.
Okay, thank you.
That help?
Yeah.
Lisa.
Do we have, um, a bid from our, um, Louis, that the comprehensive sustainability plan, it's a financial plan, right? Do we have a bid from, um, L R B on that?
We have a contract that's been routed, and so. Um, in the police department, some of the adjustments that's proposed there, um, so each year as we go through, we, we project out where we're going to finish with wages each year. And then look at all our operational costs, um, as we. Budget each fiscal year, we take the number of positions that are, are proposed through our staffing document, and we will project out what we estimate those costs will be. It's, it can be quite difficult because of, there's the enormous amount of, of. Scenarios that things can change, people leaving, coming, uh, changes in benefits, different things, and so we. We feel like over time is, as, and I know this is a discussion is, we've had a lot with council. Apparently Siri wants to talk about overtime, I apologize about that. But as we go through the process each year of, at the end of the year, we look and see where we're at with wages, um, for each department, and I know a question is always, what do we do with those excess wages if we have turnover and? Open positions, um, this isn't in the packet, but I would like to, I'm going to provide it to Brandon to be able to attach to the, to this, uh, spreadsheet. But what I did is I went through, when I pass those around, um. Is I went through and did an analysis just to kind of give council an idea of what are, and there's, you'll see there's a green, a green section and then also a purple section. What the green section is looking at is it's looking at from fiscal year twenty four all the way back to fiscal year sixteen. And what we've done is we've looked at the adopted budget. Yes, oh yes. Everybody. All right. Yeah. And so what I did is I went through and we looked at what the adopt, the green section, I looked at the adopted budget, and then we looked at what the wages were for those years, and then the purple section I went through, and if we had any. Revised, so if we did any adj, adjustments to the, those budgets during the year, um, what it looked like then, and so. For fiscal year twenty four, we've gone and we've projected out what we anticipate we will be, we'll have about, we have two and a half additional payrolls for this fiscal year. And so as you can see, if we look at wages compared to the adopted budget, you can, um, how much would remain, and so this includes. Wages, benefits, temporary, our temporary budget accounts, our overtime accounts, all wage and benefit accounts. And so in the general fund, when you look through that, so as of right now, um, we anticipate, for example, the police department to have about three point eight percent. Available or unused wages at the end of the year on a twenty four point three million dollar budget. With the proposed budget before you tonight, um, if we make, if you adopt the, this, the proposed ordinance, um, it would adjust some of those. Budgets, and so in that lower section in the revised, you can see what those impacts would be, so for police, it slightly lowers it because we're proposing to move a hundred and ninety five thousand out of wages. And the reason that we're proposing that is there, the crime, the, the Weaver, the crime lab, um, expense was higher than we had budgeted for. And also the, um, animal shelter, at Weber County Animal Shelter, that expense line, um, was higher, and so those two budgets we need to adjust and correct. And then also we have what's called our B bill leases, what those are is we, um, our fleet, uh, internal service fund. They do all the maintenance and, and support and purchasing for vehicles, and as we purchase vehicles, we create a lease rate based on the years, the estimated life of a vehicle. That we then charge back to individual departments, and we've tried to, we estimate what those budgets will be each year, and, and as you can see there, the amount. We've replaced quite a few police vehicles over the last few years, um, and we haven't adjusted that budget, and so we're proposing to use some wages to help cover that overage in the, that, those three line items.
And just insert here, uh, Justin, thank you for preparing this information, it was in response to a question I had, is like, we have these excess wages. Why aren't we just going to use them for next year's wages, so this is why he's prepared this information for you.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Any question, let's. Do you have a question? No, yeah, thank you though, this is good information for sure.
Yeah. Um, a, another couple of appropriations in the police department that we're proposing, they received, um, a small grant in the amount of a thousand dollars from, uh, the Weaver Morgan Health Department. Uh, for a summer series events that, uh, one was held in May and the other in June, so we'd like to recognize that, and then also. Um, we've received funds from the Utah Domestic Violence Coalition, uh, to help cover costs associated that were incurred. Uh, in relation to the Northern Utah Sexual Nurse Examiner's expense that we've, we've taken on, and so we'd like to recognize that revenue that's come in that we hadn't prior, we hadn't, it, we had not appropriated prior to this, so. Adding an extra thirty three thousand in the budget for police there. In the fire department, um, again, as we've had discussions with Chief Matthew and, and some of the issues they've had with turnover and, and hiring. We anticipate that they're going to have a decent amount of wages available, what, what the chief Matthew is proposing to use those funds for is he'd like to, we have one, one. Over the last several years, we've replaced quite a few of our large apparatuses, fire trucks, pumper engines, there's one last one that's, that's needing to be replaced, and it's close to a million dollars. And so what he would like to propose using is these, in excess of three hundred thousand in the general fund fire wages. Also, and, um, a hundred thousand out of his small tools and equipment, so that four hundred thousand, and then there's also an amount in the medical fund of, of excess wages. That he would like to transfer all those to the fleet fund to help, um, along with the purchase, uh, replacement amount that we already have in that fund to be able to go towards purchasing these. The reason that we're needing to do this is these, these trucks take twenty four to forty eight months to build, there's quite a lead time. And so he would like to get that ordered, that, uh, ordered, um, soon, so that we could get it in the works to get replaced and, and here in a few, in a couple of years.
Do those, do those trucks require upfront, upfront payment of everything, or can they?
The last three that we've purchased, we've had, we've prepaid for them.
Is that a requirement, or is that just our practice?
I think for pricing, a lot of it's been pricing, so getting the price now, because they take so long to build.
Okay.
Moving down into community and economic development, again, um, we also had an overage in, in wages in, in their department, so both, um, our attorney's office and, um, our C E D department. As we were projecting out are going to exceed wages, and so that payroll contingency and, and our non-departmental that we've set aside, we're proposing to transfer those to those two departments. To help cover those overages for the year, those overages resulted from, um, for each of those two departments, in the attorney's office, we, there were some. Adjustments to some wages for a couple of their positions, as well as, um. Uh, excess temporary wages due to some of the large projects that we have going on, so we've had some, um, they've had. With Wonder Block, we've had some, uh, part-time little people that they've had to pay for, and that's been quite an expense, and so we're helping to cover that cost as well, that they incurred this year. The, we also would like to, so that amount is eighty five thousand and for C E D, the, the attorney's portion is, I thought I had that on there, I believe it was. Thirty thousand, so, and then under, um, and then the other item under C E D is, there was a, a recent event, I don't know if anybody was able to attend, an accelerator conference that, that C E D helped, um, host. And there was a couple of people that donated funds to be able to put on this event, and so we'd like to recognize that, the, um, business development group were the ones that organized that event, and so to help cover those costs, so we're. Proposing to appropriate that four thousand dollars they received to cover that. And then under public services, we'd like to propose, uh, a move, a reduction of three hundred and thirty thousand out of their wages. Um, a portion of that, thirty thousand of that, we'd like to move to the attorney's professional techno, technical account, and what that would be used for. Is additional legal costs for outside counsel that they're anticipating, uh, and then the other three hundred thousand we're proposing that would be transferred. Out to the C I P fund to be put into our general facility improvement C I P, um, as we continue to have needs with, with that project, we. We have done this in the past where we've used excess wages for, um, for the, our general facilities C I P. And I know, uh, one of the questions in talking to Janine yesterday that I just wanted to make sure to talk about, when we do have these excess wages, a lot of times. The discussion would be, you know, can we use these ongoing, but where these really are one-time funds at this point. So what we do is we look at what we can use those for, for a one-time purpose, and a lot of times with capital needs. Um, and a lot of smaller cities, that's what they do, these, they use excess wages for their capital needs, because they don't have a, a, a B D O that provides all that extra revenue, and so. We're proposing to add that, that, uh, three hundred thousand to that C I P.
So how many, how much is the total excess wage issue? Or maybe you're getting the.
Um, I didn't have a slide on that, but I can definitely get it and provide it to Janine on what we, what I, what we're projecting, um, the percentage is about four percent of the. Just under four percent of the fifty eight million dollars, so. Whatever that dollar amount is, but. Yeah. Would reduce it down.
I just want to say that when I was listening to a lot of the meetings, um, over the course of the last couple of days. Definitely cannot hear people when they're on the mics right now, so. That might be helpful to note.
I, I did want to point out, um, in regards to public services, the second page that I provided, I know some of the discussion as far as part-time with their group. And with them having a lot of excess wages, a lot of that is due to, um, not being able to fill those part-time and seasonal employees, and so what the second page is showing is. How much at the end of each fiscal year we've had available of unspent temporary dollars, and so you can see, um, in fiscal year twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. We ended up spending more than what the original adopted budget was, um, but then over the last several years, it was, you can see those, those percentages increasing. Of the amount of funds not being spent on temporary, um, position or temporary dollars, um, in their department. Um, this year is a little bit lower, what we're anticipating right now, partially the budget was also lowered, um, we, we used some part-time funding in fiscal year twenty four to create a, a new position in, in the Parks area. And so that's why that looks a little different, but you can see that the trend was in an upward direction. Any other questions, so the total appropriation is to increase the general fund by two hundred and eighty seven thousand, is there any other questions on the general fund before we move to other funds?
We didn't, if we didn't transfer the payroll contingency, where else would we get the money?
So we've looked through, and so, um, my staff, we've gone through, um, especially like C E D and legal. And projected out what expenses we know they're going to have through the end of the year, and we've tried to already clean up and move, if there is any excess. Operational money into wages to try to cover those, so this is the amount that we need to, to help cover the, the delta on those. But we have, so we have gone through a process to try to cover as, but as best we could on those overages.
Sorry, one more question, so when you do that, do you do it just within their departments, or do you look at other departments?
So what we'll do is with.
For instance, police, police always seem to have an overage. Do we use their money to help offset attorneys?
So if we did that, we would need to come to council to, uh, propose that if we're moving it between departments, so the department director has that authority within their department. But then if we're looking between departments, that's where we would bring that to council, and so, but, for example, using part of the wages out of public services to move to the attorney's office. And so we would need to bring that before you're, before you. In our, the tourism fund, this is where our T R T tax is, um, this is a, just an adjustment, the revenues are higher than what we've projected in our original budget, so we'd like to increase the, those revenues by thirty five thousand. And we're increasing our, our central, or our, um. The convention and visitors bureau, um, amount by that same amount, um, and that's the fifty five percent that we, that we pay, and so whatever amount isn't actually paid out of that, we will, it'll go into that fund balance, and then. We'll look in future years what we can use that for and come before you, but, so we're recognizing that, so that's a true up to that fund. And then, so a total of thirty five thousand to the tourism fund, and then in the capital improvement fund, uh, the changes that we're proposing there, the first is the transfer in of a three hundred thousand. Um, that we've talked about, coming from the general fund, and that would go to our general facilities improvements. And then we also would like to propose, we, we set some contingency money aside each year in, in the, in the C I P fund. Um, there's a need right now with the, the. Tellmonte, um, driving range net, it's in dire need of, of replacement, and so we. Um, we'd like to propose using that contingency this year and transferring out of the C I P fund and moving it to the golf fund. So that they can use those funds to, to help with replacing that along the driving range there as a safety concern. Uh, the other, um, proposals in the C I P fund or the public services group would be to recognize, we'd like to recognize the ramp grants that we've received for both. They're related to the Mount Ogden and Mount Erie Playground and Equipment, and also the Lester Park Playground Equipment, we've received those ramps, the match has already been programmed in the budget. This is recognizing the ramp that was awarded this year. Um, a couple other changes on the use of fun side, uh, before I get to the last one, is our, our twentieth street Washington to Quincy, C I P has been completed. They have excess funds in that project, and we'd like to propose the original source of that project. The city portion came from our general street construction project, we'd move the funds out of that one and moved them into this project to be able to be used. So we're proposing to move that excess back into the street construction, so they have additional funds there. We also budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand this year in a contingency for, related to our B and C funds that we receive. Um, our revenues are higher than what we, that, our revenues have met our projections, and so we're proposing that, to use, to program that contingency into a, a project. And working with the, our engineering group, we're proposing to also add those to our, our street construction C I P. Um, as we know, there's, there's a lot in need there, and they've got a lot of projects they're working on. And then the last item is a recognition of, of, of an amount from U dot for nine hundred thousand, uh, we're program, want to program that into our centennial trails, what this is, is, um. It's a, for the, it's related to our B D O connector trail project, and so we're, we have a required match of six hundred thousand, which we already have a few different sources, we're going to use some utility. Um, out of our utility projects, there's some match there, um, and then we also have another project, um, that we have those funds, so we, we don't have to come with the match for this, but we're recognizing the. The amount we're receiving from U dot for that project. So the total change in the capital improvement fund is just over one point eight million? Any, I'm sorry, before I move on, any questions on either of those?
Just that centennial trail again, you mentioned it's a connector trail, can you, what does it connect, is it just off the Ogden, Ogden River?
The one that this project relates to specifically, uh, so this one, it's for the B D O shared use path, I'm not sure, I know it's over in the seventeenth street area. Um, near the, the B D O area, I'm not sure the exact location of it, but it's in that, in that area.
Okay, thank you.
So can I just clar, clarifying question, um, on the excess wages, so like, you said, so you said that. If the, the directors have the authority to reappropriate that in their departments, if they see a need, they can, they can go ahead and do that, anything other than that. Does come to the council if we're going to move it from one budget to, to the other, so on, on, on the police page, it just, just because I'm remembering, it looked like that was one of the budget amendments was within. Correct, why would that be?
So we had, we agreed a few years ago that if we are taking from wages to use for operational needs, that we would bring that to council.
Okay.
And so that's one of the reasons that that's there, is if we, if we're using any excess wages for operational needs.
Okay, and then the four point six two remaining, that's, that is all excess wages or just those that have not been reappropriated?
It would be all those that would be avail, what we're estimating would be unspent by the end of the year.
Okay.
Then that would be, um, related to wages, benefits, temporary accounts, and again, if there were any temporary full-time positions that were funded that may not have been filled. There's quite a few different things that could lead to why there's still that excess there, um, I know part of that exam, part of that is, um. In community development, the funding for the planning, um, general plan update, we have put temporary funding to build, so they could hire, hire a couple. Temporary full-time positions, um, they didn't hire those till partway through the year, so.
Okay.
And so does that money go into fund balance?
Yes, okay, yeah, any unspent of that would flow into fund balance at the end of the year, correct. Correct. Um, looking at our internal service funds and our enterprise funds, um, in the airport fund, we'd like. Looking at our internal service funds and our enterprise funds, in the airport fund, we'd like to appropriate, recognize the, to just over $2 million that will be, that we have been authorized and received from the FAA. This is related to the terminal building. If you recall, we, a few months ago, we had money set aside already for them to do some improvements. As part of the FAA program, we actually were also awarded money for the terminal. So this is recognizing those. I know in working with Jared that there is in, in the airport group, that they do have plans and what they're going to use these funds for. In that terminal CIP, we do have a little bit of money left over that we'll use as the match for this 2 million. And so this is just recognizing the FAA portion of, that we've been awarded. In the golf fund, the, for the second item there is recognizing a transfer in of the 100,000 that we talked about, that's coming out of the CIP fund. So that would be used for the, the fence netting there at El Monte. The other is we'd like to recognize the municipal ramp grant that's been awarded to the city in the golf fund again this year. We've been using these funds to help put in the, the deck there at El Monte. There's an additional 25,000 needed for that. So in talking to the public works group, we'd like to appropriate a portion of that 87 to finish the deck that is needed. And the rest, the anticipation is that with the new deck, that they would have an increased amount of people coming to, to eat. And so there are improvements that are needed to the kitchen area there at the, at the, at the, at the building. And so we'd like to appropriate the rest of that money to be used for the kitchen need. They need to replace the hood, some other things to bring it up to code. And so we'd like to appropriate that, that, that those funds there. So the total increase to golf is 187,000. In the BDO fund, we'd like to appropriate a use of fund balance that would be transferred out to the track line RDA area to be used for the exchange building. And we'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But regarding the use of retained earnings from BDO, at the end of fiscal year 23, we had about 2.76 million dollars left in that fund balance. We're appropriating or proposing in the budget for next year to use 2.2. So that would have led us roughly 560,000. This is what we're proposing to use that 560,004 to transfer it to the track lane RDA area to be able to help with the exchange building improvement that, that is needed out there.
Can I just ask, is that retained earnings just from the, this last year or is that from any prior years?
And fiscal year 23.
Just 23, okay.
Yep.
And Justin, if I may, on the the stockyard building.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry. And, and yeah, it's helpful because several things are referred to as different things, like visit Ogden was referred to as the convention and visitors bureau a minute ago. So thanks for that. It, it, has there been, I know it's in tough shape. Is it retrievable? We've lost the investor that was going to come in and redevelop and restore that building. Are, are we at a point where we're prudently continuing to spend money on this building? Or would it be better spent somewhere else?
I, I'd have to turn to the expert. Jared is here to, he comes speak on that. I know they have a quote as far as what it would cost just to keep the building standing and re-roof and, and what that would cost. But Jared may be able to.
Thank you, Jared.
Yeah, you bet. So we did have a conversation with abstract masonry. And the reason we talked to them is because they do most of the historical work for the state historical preservation office. So we talked with them and they did give us an estimate of a quote to go in there and re-point, and to stabilize all the brickwork, get it tied back together, rebuild those parapets, get the caps and the coins back on. Put all that together and then do a new roof on top of that. So that we could seal it in and weather protect it. So it doesn't continue to, to degrade. That estimate was about 1.6 to 1.8 million to get it to that point. We would then still need to address doors, windows, openings and things like that. It's a big concern. We, so it is in rough shape and it's getting worse every day. It's concerning. The, the northwest corner has fallen down. It, it can still be saved. There's a cost to it, but we could go back in and stabilize it and get it back in. We are still having problems where we have to board it up about every three days. It's still getting broken into. I don't really understand what the draw is to can to go in. I know it's on a lot of ghost hunter sites and different things like that. So we do have it fenced off. We do have two different camera systems down there. So I don't know why, why we need to keep, why people keep wanting to get in there. But anyway, back to your question, yes, it, it can be stabilized, but the further it goes, the more costly it's going to be.
Yeah. Has a comprehensive conversation and study taken place to determine what it's going to take to restore the building and whether or not spending a million here and a million there is worth it if it's just gonna fade away anyway. And I know it's a historic building and it's tied to a, a local and famous and respected architect. And it matches other buildings in town, however.
It is, it is.
Add to his before you answer?
I, I just, just asked the question, are we in violation of our own demolition, demolition by neglect ordinance? And, and does that ordinance require us to do this? Or can we at some point say, wow, we just don't want to spend the money?
So yes, we are. That building has been neglected. It needs to be taken care of. Something needs to happen and move forward with it. We previously thought, you know, that there was a path moving forward, but that didn't come to fruition, as you're, as you're well aware. There is some commitments that, you know, that the city made in the past that we would pursue saving that building and moving forward. We have had additional conversations with some potential developers. We likely need to go out to an RFP and do some work on that front to kind of get that moving forward. They, we've had several expressed interest that they would like the building. Most of them would like to restore it in its configuration and the square footage that it currently exists as, not necessarily having the big addition. You know, with kind of the top overhang that we had previously talked about and had shown. Not a lot of interest necessarily in that, but there is interest in it's restoring it back to the footprint that it is and potentially still maybe doing another smaller building on the east side of the lot of it. So it, it does still have value. But you are right in the sense that we're at a crossroads. A decision needs to be made. We either need to pursue that and get something happening or because it literally a brick falls off every day. Like it's, it's, it is in rough shape.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jared. So what is the timing of doing that? I mean, it seems like that it, we had plans to with a, I, I understand the developer that is not there, but I would assume that there's other developers out there that might want that or be part of that. What do, what are we doing to pursue them?
So we've had some of the conversations. I mean, we've had a couple that have asked us, can we just take over? Can we assume the agreement that existed before? There's some stuff in there that doesn't make that the best option to move forward, which we just need to start fresh with that. And just get a proposal out there and, and start taking some, some recommendations from them.
It seems like we should be doing that sooner rather than later. We're, we're putting a lot of money towards it.
Yeah, agreed.
And was there, just to stay on that redevelopment area for a second, in, in the northwest corner, there was a new building going up across from Ogden Zone. Was, was that a spec build or is, is that that particular building, is it occupied or will it be?
It will be. So it was a spec build originally. So Black Pine was the developer on that one and their construction is done. They met with them. It's, it's a few weeks ago. They potentially have a buyer for the entire building. It, it was meant that it can be compartmentalized into like, up to like four different tenants. But they actually have a company that's interested in the entire building and they're actually getting ready to build another one just to the east of it.
Okay. And then beyond that next lot that is going to be built on, how much space is remaining out there?
I believe there's one, one more lot.
One more? So it just kind of tells me that we had, there's been demand for the property. And I hope that we find somebody that can preserve the building and use the lot and benefit the city or I'm going to say it out loud, tear the building down and a vacant lot might be more valuable to somebody than a building that needs to be restored. Anyway, I'm, we're going down a, a path that I didn't intend to go down, but thanks.
All right. The last couple of items on the, in the budget appropriation, I'll go through these quickly. In the medical fund, we already addressed this a little bit, but so it would be using 275,000 in wages that would be moved over to our fleet and facilities fund. So in the fleet and facilities fund, it would be recognizing, increasing the revenues of 675,000 for those amounts from the fire department. To be able to help towards their fire, that fire truck replacement. We'd also would like to recognize in an amount related to a grant, a federal grant that we are receiving for EV vehicles. And so we'd like to appropriate that 128,000 to be able to, to go through that process of purchasing a few EV, EV vehicles. And then the last one is a true up in our facility maintenance contracts as we, each year as we, facilities provides services and maintenance to other departments that are, that are not already budgeted for, and they charge those back. This is just to recognize that additional revenue and additional expense that they've taken on. So the increase in the fleet and facilities fund is just over a million dollars. And then the final is looking in our miscellaneous grants. The first one is again, related to the federal grant that we're receiving from the Department of Energy for both EV vehicles and equipment. So the total amount is 145,000, 128 of that we're going to put into fleet. And then the rest would be that that difference would be for the equipment that will be, to be able to install. We'd also like to appropriate and recognize a couple of small police grants, one for a K9 unit and some, one for some AED equipment for 3,300 and $5,000. And then the last one is to recognize a grant received in CED for oral history grant from the state of Utah for $3,000. So the total appropriation for all funds in the, in the city is increasing the budget by 5,819,050. Now, it's a lot and I, but is there any questions?
Janine, do we want to do the MBA next? Or RDA next? And then come, let's go ahead and just continue on with the RDA and then we'll, if we have time, come back to the the general budget discussion.
Sounds great. And this one should go quickly because we've already talked about a couple of the items. So in the year-end budget opening for the redevelopment agency, there are a few items that we'd like to propose. I'll move down to the second and third items first. So the South CBD wall mall area and the 12th Street RDA area are both closed areas. They have an existing fund balance in there of funds that received above and beyond what were anticipated and used during those, during the years. And so we're proposing both of those were haircut districts. Sorry, the word left my mind. Both of those were haircut districts. And so we're proposing to, to, to transfer the fund balances left in those two over to the CBD mall area to add and help with the, the debt there with the, the junction. And so the, the, you can see in the South CBD and the 12th Street, it would be moving those up into the CBD mall area. And then moving down one more, the next one, the south wall area, RDA area, this is another expired area. I know CED is in process of, of a resolution that would close all three of these areas. This is the budget side that we're looking at right now. And I know they're in the works to get, that transmitted to officially reclose these three areas. But regarding the south wall area, we'd like to propose the use of fund balance of 149,000 in that area. We're still working on what we can use those for. We've been in discussions on what we qualify. We've, all the commitments in that area have been paid for. But there are certain restrictions. And so before we propose what we're going to use those on, we wanted to get this budget opening to you. And once we know what we're going to use that on, we'll, we'll bring another action before you. The last two items, we've already discussed, recognizing the money, the transfer in from the city in the Ogden River area for the 250,000 from the Piccadilly Building South. And then the other one is recognizing a transfer in from, from BDO of 560,000 for the exchange building. So this brings the total appropriation in the redevelopment agency to 1,052,200. Any questions on the redevelopment agency budget?
So this is on the, these are on the agenda for next week for consideration. Which is, it's the last meeting in the fiscal year.
So if there are additional questions that come about, let us know as soon as possible and we'll make sure they get addressed in the presentation next week. The question is, when do the south mall CBD area close?
22. I think all three of them were, yeah. The end of 2022. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right. We have a few minutes yet. Council staff, but general budget discussion, kind of probably a timeline update on where we are and everything. Is that? Welcome up Glenn.
Okay, thanks. So, yeah, we've just got a few minutes. We wanted to check in with you all to see if there were any changes you wanted to discuss or propose with the tentative budget. So any of the schedule A changes. You've all been through a number of meetings, some small groups, some other discussions. Janine has done a great job of capturing all of the, the information that you shared, the concerns, the issues, the questions. So you all have that. This is just kind of a really high level categorization of, of the basic things that you've talked about, the basic categories. So there's not a whole lot more detail. I mean, it's just this slide. So you have all the details with the notes that Janine sent out, but we wanted to put this up there to see if there was anything that you all wanted to discuss, just as a reminder, if any of these things would trigger a discussion for you. So we've only got about a week left, really a day or two, if we want to get changes made to the schedule A to get into the packet in time for you all to, to have time to read that this weekend to make a decision next week. So we do need to have a tentative budget in place. By the end of this month, of course, the 25th, we don't have a meeting because there's an election. So really next week is, is your last chance to get the tentative budget done. You obviously still have more time with the final. So we can just open it up to you all if there are things that you want to discuss.
Anything we want to discuss here in that?
So I just, I have a question. You know, we had our small group meetings and we did get a recap of kind of the tone and thoughts around the budget as it came from us in small group meetings and, and how does, how do we arrive where we're going from there? I'm just a little foggy.
Yeah. So, so you talk to each other and then you figure out what, you get, get a consensus or, I mean, you each have an opportunity to vote how you want to vote. And you can, this is the time that you can air your concerns or your support or whatever is you want. And that, that's the whole purpose of this discussion time is hopefully that you can come out, but it doesn't have to be here. You can do it, you know, amongst yourselves like you do on other issues.
And then in a, for example, when we go to a meeting next week, then is there, i- i- is it commonplace where you might see an amendment to a motion to accept heard? Or is it all put forth pretty clean at that point?
So you can do that for staff, for the recorders, for the finance people, for the attorneys. It's better to have it upfront if we know what's coming, but that doesn't mean that you can't do it.
Yeah, I was just more looking for
Process.
Yeah, process and, and what, how things should ideally run versus getting into the weeds deep with alternative considerations around motions next week. alternative considerations around motions next week.
Just, I don't know if I'm answering your question and it's asking another question, but I mean, it's conceivable that we've just passed the tentative budget next week and then we still make changes before August.
Thank you for that.
That people can still get paid through July.
Right.
And then changes can be made in August. That's.
Right. So if you think about like a race where we've already got the on your mark, next week's kind of like the get set. And then the last one's the go. So yeah, ideally we could get those adjustments in before that gets set if there's something that we all feel strongly about. But if we don't, doesn't mean we still can't. And we could still make those adjustments, but it is, it is crunch time as far as talking with each other and figuring out what items are important or what items we'd like to see some adjustments or changes on. Yeah.
I mean, we are doing the public and adopting, potentially adopting the bond parameters for the water line. So that would be something like if we do this, I guess we could still do that and then potentially not agree to have it in there later, but that doesn't really make sense. So if we pass it to me in my thinking, we pass that tonight, we're kind of agreeing that it's going to be in the budget, but
Right.
it could change if we suddenly decided.
So that's a good question and something I learned earlier this week. So the water rate increases are included in the budget. For next week, we have on the agenda for you to consider whether or not you want to approve those water rate increases. And we're giving you the option to either vote next week or continue it till whenever you want, but no later than August sixth. And so Lisa mentioned that the state loan requires that a fee schedule be in place before they can close. So that would, if you decide to hold off on what you, decide what you want to do on the water rates until August, they could not close on that loan until that is in place. That makes sense. So the action that you take, yeah. So the action you take tonight is approving everything. That doesn't mean it has, they have to close. So you still have an option out if that's, you know, somehow what you want to do.
Whereas other things are more flexible, I guess.
Do they have an ideal or what they would consider an ideal closing date?
Lisa, do you know if they've talked about a closing date?
We've talked to Olivia and the state about closing in July. However, with the ARPA funding that engineering has, if we delayed it until August, I, I don't see that.
Okay. Councilmember Myers.
So it seems to me of the summaries that I've heard of the small meetings and just interaction that we've had individually, at least I've had individually with some of the other council members, that that last BDO lease revenue transfer is one of the issues that personally I'm least comfortable with. I support the raises. I support a lot of the budget that's been proposed. I'm just new enough that I don't know quite how to address that last issue of funding proposed expenses that we have without dipping into the BDO lease revenue transfer. So is there an action that we can take to, to find other revenue to cover that so that that BD, BDO lease revenue income is not encumbered permanently?
Well, so one of the discussions that are suggestions that have come out of these group discussions was to go ahead and appropriate the one point eight million that they're requesting on a one time basis only. And hold off discussions on how you want to handle it going forward on the ordinance amendment until after you've adopted the budget. If the raises include, are, include that one point eight million dollars. So if you don't appropriate that money, then yes, somebody will have to go find some money that maybe that's an additional tax increase. Right now, we just got the certified tax rate on Monday and Lisa did some calculations and to get the hundred and eighty three thousand dollars, which they were, which is currently in the budget. It's less than a one percent increase, like point nine two percent increase. To maintain the rate, and if I did the math right, and I think I did, it's about a five point four percent increase. And that would give a little over a million dollars, about one point one million dollars is what that, to maintain the rate, that's how much revenue would be generated by a five point three, four increase, percent increase.
Or it could be that we say no to certain amount of positions. So it might say yes to the salary increase, but we're not adding X amount of positions that you requested or
And that's been part of the discussion is not necessarily maybe notice some positions, but also maybe not funding full year positions and maybe saying let's fund half of a year on some of those. So.
And the theory behind the half year is that it takes time to ramp up to be able to hire some of the new positions anyway. Which is some saving for one year, right? But in the, in the following budget year, you still have the same issue.
But for me, that doesn't mean everything is static from one year to the next. We don't have to consider where the those that develop the budget don't have the same set of circumstances to consider for generating and allocating monies for wages. We're in a dynamic situation that brings revenues to us in different ways. And, and things change both for the positive and hopefully not for the negative, but they, they can go that way. So it could be found in a different way next year because you start with a clean slate and begin again.
There are certainly other factors at play. Sales tax could change. I mean, for the better or the worse. So that's.
I think it would be challenging to add positions this year and then eliminate them next, you know. And it hasn't, we haven't really done that since I've been here anyway, where we've had to deal with that. So that would be challenging.
Yeah, I think that perhaps, so, so what status quo, everything, wants to make some changes. Even if we don't change the BDO lease revenue ordinance, we could still take the money out this year. And, and then figure out what we're going to do ongoing. And so that's, I think, to answer your question. So we don't have to change the ordinance to still pass it and use it this way this year.
Right.
It would definitely be a change in our philosophy about how we use the BDO.
It definitely would. And that's, but I think, I think the that gives us a little longer time to deal with how we don't encumber that money through salaries or to figure out a method that is reasonable going forward. You know, and I'm saying it's not reasonable at some point. I just don't know what it is. And, and I won't know by next week and I won't know by August, I don't think. So. Okay.
And I know I'm definitely just still getting back on track, but I would definitely, I totally support giving the current employees, all of them, the appropriate salary to start with. That would be my priority first before adding new positions, although I know adding positions does help them because then they don't have the same workload, you know what I mean? But that would be my priority first if we were going to eliminate anything. We just don't know what that is.
Yeah, exactly. Because we don't have the wage. Yeah, we, we might not have enough money
Right.
budgeted for what's being suggested you need to do. And as councilperson White has said too, it, it's a little mind boggling. We can go back and read Janine's report on the increases that have taken place in the city following the Evergreen study. And now here we are very quickly on the, on the leading edge of yet another study. And I, I asked the same question, Marcia, what was wrong with Evergreen? And how do we find ourselves supposedly behind yet again? It, it's a little bit of a mystery to me anyway.
So in the interest of time, I'm sure I don't know if you had a comment. Felt like we were singing a duet there for a minute. We're both like just ready to, anyway, so.
Good thing I've been eating meats.
I know, yeah. And I've been eating onions. So sorry about that. Let's go ahead. So we've got a lot of discussion to talk about. Like I said, we definitely need to get to some decisions. But we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting, pick up our city council meeting in a couple of minutes and.
Can I just add? So next, next week's work session, you pretty much have the whole work session to have this type of discussion before you actually have to take action.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.